On this episode of NorCal News Now from March 3, 2018, we're chatting with Chico City Council Candidate Rich Ober. I'm your co-host Mike Richmond.
And I'm your co-host Aaron Har.
You are, Aaron. How you doing, buddy?
I'm doing good.
Yeah, how was your week?
It was good. It was good. I had a good weekend down in San Diego, which I guess today you're going to interview me a little bit.
You know, I'm going to interview you a little bit about what happened at San Diego. Now, you are a delegate, right? Unless I missed my guess?
Yes, full disclosure, I am an elected delegate, and we've had some episodes about that. Third of third of third, a third of delegates are appointed, a third of them are elected officials and serve on county, you know, party committees, and a third of them are elected by the people. So, yes.
So you're an elected delegate, and last weekend, starting on, what was it, on Saturday or was it on Friday, you went down to San Diego?
Friday.
Friday, you went down to San Diego, and you had a fun-filled weekend. Some national news came out of that, but which we'll get to in a few moments. But there was an interesting, interesting exchange, interesting debates, interesting arguments and conversations that happened down there, right?
Yeah, yeah, there was some stuff that happened. You know, it was good to get down there, hear the speeches. We're there to basically endorse candidates. And so I'm kind of down there trying to figure out if that's worth it. Not a lot of parties do this. In fact, we might be the only one that endorses within the party like this at a primary or at our convention. So, a little strange, and it seems like the candidates spent quite a bit of money trying to get those delegate endorsements and trying to get the endorsement of the California Party because 100% of the time, if they get the endorsement, you know, they go on to win. Well, if they're running Democrat, Democrat on a two-party system. So, it was interesting, and there was definitely a sign that the progressives were moving the needle a little bit by Dianne Feinstein, long-term Senator, not getting the endorsement of the party.
That was the national news that pretty much came out of that convention, yeah.
The party endorsed no candidate in that race. And then there's kind of sort of an underground side story of that, of Pat Harris, who we had on the show, very unapologetic, progressive, not taking any corporate money. There's a really hardcore wing of the progressive California Party, especially the delegate side, that is there to kind of look for candidates like that. And it got into sort of a strategy pick of picking, you know, Kevin DeLeone. However, if you added the Kevin DeLeone and the Pat Harris, it would only have been 59%. So there's still, you know, there was still not enough. You've got to get 60% of the delegate vote to get the endorsement of the party.
Right.
So...
But is Kevin DeLeone a real progressive, in your mind?
You know, I like Kevin DeLeone. He did not get my vote, just simply because I'm not going to pass on somebody that's so, and this is going to sound cliche, it's going to come up a lot, but so Bernie Sanders-like. I mean, as a guy who's dedicated his life to, you know, serving the rule of law, and I think he hit all the marks for me as far as being a good Senator, what I'm looking for in a Senator. And Kevin DeLeone, last couple of years, he seems like he has a lot of alliances and, you know, sort of a lot of things he gets cornered into. And certainly some independents, some conservatives up here have noticed his, you know, leadership down there. And it's turned them off quite a bit, you know, not to the tune of Jerry Brown or anything. But I see some things in Pat Harris that I really like. And, you know, he traveled up here, he spoke to people. And so, I kind of felt, and I think there were some people like me, there was 150 people like me that really felt that we don't want to whiff on this opportunity of having this great candidate. And we got, you know, really, we got hit up on social media, we got destroyed by the party a little bit, attacked for making that vote and not getting the full endorsement for the other side. So, it's interesting because our pushback to that was, well, it's time to turn in your Bernie card and turn in your progressive values. And it got to a bigger conversation of, are we there to give an endorsement or play a strategy? And my mind was, when you're giving an endorsement, it's much bigger than playing a strategy. But I mean, there's a box you can check of no endorsement. So, the candidates really have to hit a criteria to, for me at least, to get that endorsement. You know, people have elected me to endorse good candidates, so I choose a lot of non-endorsements because it's two people that I feel don't fit those total values to get the full endorsement. I did endorse some people, Delain Easton for Governor, so I also endorsed more of a progressive for Governor who got 20%. And some other people. But there was also a vote I did that was strategic. So I'm kind of guilty on both sides, where somebody ran for Lieutenant Governor in LA, Hernandez. You know, my union decided with endorsing him. However, I just, being up here in Northern California, I haven't felt like he's ever been up here, he hasn't paid attention up here. So, there's another candidate that is, and Eleni Kukakas. And I feel like there's some other good candidates in that, but I feel like she has the, the sort of the ground game, the machine. She's been to all 58 counties and really been touring California. So, something like that, I did pick a strategic post. So I'm guilty on both sides. Yeah.
So what's the status here in District 1? I know that there was no consensus reached in terms of a Democratic candidate for Congress to go up against Lamafa. So, the question is, how does that process work? I was a little confused about it as well. You straightened me out as to how that goes down. So, talk a little bit about how that worked out and how it works out.
Well, you know, as far as I know, it works out on sort of the executive level. There's officers, and then there's sort of an executive chair seat for the, and I think they decide among themselves, it's just not worth them to come down. Nobody, neither, nobody's going to get 60%. The party wasn't going to endorse someone. So, they kind of told the candidates beforehand, let's not waste our time on wasting money. And, you know, that's what I come away with from this of, is this really necessary? I mean, these candidates are having to spend tons of money and resources trying to sway the party to get, you know, their endorsement. And we could have some type of rules or some type of, you know, in-party financing or something where it doesn't have to be like this. Because literally one candidate, Dave Jones, and I mean, this is probably just, this is probably more of a rumor of an "I heard," so I'm not sure, but the story is that he, you know, sort of spent a lot of his war chest going in to try to get that endorsement, that nomination, because it's so important and so powerful. I think we just get rid of the thing, because when you look at resources and what you need in a party to ultimately win a race in November, and you shouldn't, you know, as I've done this as campaign manager, you certainly can't waste your resources on trying to get a mere 2,000 people to, you know, 60% of those people to vote for.
Want to keep your powder dry. But there was an endorsement, there was a straw poll, I guess, that came out of the convention that did lean one way in terms of the California District 1 race. How did that transpire?
Well, there's a group down there, that's the California Young Democrats, and they did have a motion or agenda from the floor that they ended up calling to endorse Audrey Denny, who's running in California District 1 here. So, they did put in their endorsement, and it did pass. So, I'm not sure if it's official yet or officially posted yet. It is official that the California Young Democrats have endorsed her. And, yeah, the California or the Chico State Democrats actually endorsed another candidate early on. But, you know, a lot of times you want to get your endorsements out there early, just to kind of, you know, get it out there to show that that candidate's been out there running, that candidate's been out there working. And other times, you know, some people put out their endorsements, you know, a little later. They wait a little longer to make sure that the filing date's passed and that, you know, we have the candidates that are going to be out there. So, there's also another thing that, you know, always needs to be thought about is, you know, how these endorsements are going to work. And, you know, I look forward to talking to Rich. He's got a very powerful endorsement, our guest today, so.
Good, great. We're going to get to that. Thanks for that little report from San Diego. We'll be keeping our eye on the machinations of the campaigns, the various campaigns that goes forward here in 2018.
It was a great time. You know, for me, I had a real nice time because there's a lot of people who I've followed for a couple of years in the progressive movement in California. And getting down there, networking with them, talking to them, having some conversations, as long as the candidates too, hearing their speeches as well, you know, it was a fun time. And of course, there was some other stuff in the scene, but pretty stupid, silly stuff. So, yeah. You know, I also call it the Catalina Wine Mixer, you know, from Step Brothers. So, it can be a kind of a show sometimes.
All right. Well, thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, we made it.
Good job, good job, man. All right. Well, we're going to turn now to our guest. Joining us on today's show is a longtime Chico Civic Leader who served on the City's Park Commission for 10 years, including three years as Chair. He's also been on the Torres Shelters Board for the past three years, including two years as Chair. He's also a founder of Mobilize. Now, he's taking aim at a Chico City Council seat in the election this November. Rich Ober, welcome to NorCal News Now.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Aaron. It's good to be here.
That's right. Well, thank you for being here. Well, maybe you can start by telling us a little bit about your political journey. How'd you get here to this place in your life where you're running now for Chico City Council?
Yeah, it's a pleasure. So, I actually grew up in a tiny town in rural Ohio. Picture Durham without all the people. About 300 people in this town, and I grew up there from, obviously, real little. And my mom ran for, we were technically a village, so Village Council. And I think she got 13 votes or something like that, and that was enough to win a seat on the Village Council. And so she was kind of a role model from there on. We were a very politically active family. This is back in the days when, you know, we watched the news during dinner, and it was the Vietnam War era. And so, that activated me, I think, from a real young age. Then you flash forward all the way to, well, 24 years ago, when Kate, my wife, and I first moved to Chico. And we saw Chico as very much a city where people did and should and could become very active at all kinds of levels. And so I spent a stint doing PR work for Habitat for Humanity. I spent nearly 10 years on the Gateway Science Museum Board of Directors before there was a museum, coached Little League with my kids. And then I decided to kind of take it to the next level and joined or put my name in the hat, and then was appointed to the Bidwell Park and Playground Commission. And I served 10 years on the Park Commission. Pretty proud of the work that we did, and we can talk about some of those details. But, and then, as you mentioned more recently, have been involved with the Torres Shelter, doing work, obviously, on issues of homelessness and poverty in Chico, which is where really my heart is. And then we can talk about Mobilize too, but that's been a journey over the last year or so.
Quite a resume.
Well, thanks.
Well, now, you describe yourself as a liberal on your Facebook page, looking at your page. And how, first of all, how do you kind of describe that? People have different ways of describing these terms. And how do you think that would play out in your role, hopefully, your role in the council?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think, you know, there are all kinds of labels we can apply to ourselves when we're both in the political arena and just in our personal lives. You can, you know, wear the label of father or brother or husband, or in my case, you know, communications manager or progressive, certainly lifelong progressive. And I think, you know, in terms of being liberal or being a-liberal, it's more about values and liberal values. And I think for me, what that means is, you know, in issues of whether it's homelessness and poverty or, you know, social issues like, you know, when a group of very courageous dreamers and community members and their allies, you know, come before the City Council and ask just for their voices to be heard, liberal values say, well, we're going to embrace that. We're going to go there, and we're going to have that conversation and have a true dialogue around, you know, the issues that these people are facing, that they're bringing forward to us. That, to me, that's, those are liberal values. Whether it's a, you know, a label or not, is probably less important than what that set of values, you know, drives you or educates you to take a position on. So, that's kind of the way I approach it, anyway.
Awesome. That's great. Now, this was an interesting thing. At the meeting, and Aaron, I think you, I don't know if you were at this meeting on February 20th or not, but at the Chico City Council meeting on the 20th, there was a vote along progressive-conservative lines, conservative-conservative lines, four to three, to limit the term to people on the council to three years. Not retroactively, but to limit to three years, to three terms, I should say. So, the question really is, I mean, first of all, you know, is that a good idea? And secondly, whether it is or not, is it a partisan idea? I mean, it's split through partisan lines, but is it a partisan issue?
Right, right. I think it's a good question, and I think it's certainly a topic that's going to come up repeatedly. So, first of all, I'm not sure that it is a good idea. I think anything that limits or restricts the amount of experience and institutional knowledge, community, kind of breadth and scope of involvement, anything that restricts people being engaged at, you know, any level of government, but certainly local government, is not necessarily a good idea. So, on the surface of it, I'm not sure that it's a great idea to impose term limits on something like, you know, City Council, where you really need people who not only are invested and have, like I'm saying, a breadth of knowledge of issues, but who also know how the mechanisms of, you know, city government work in order to actually get things done, which we haven't seen for the past several years with a conservative majority. In order to push through that, I think we need experience, we need people who really know what they're doing. In terms of how it, you know, becomes a partisan issue, I'm a bit confused on that myself. I think that there is probably some motivation on the part of the conservative majority who floated that idea, when they kind of looked at the landscape of who else was at the dais. There certainly are council members who have, are kind of suspicious of those motives. I don't think it necessarily needs to be a partisan issue. And I think, you know, I think ultimately, it probably will end up being on the ballot. I think it'll go to the voters. And, you know, that's fine. That's how we ought to operate. We've got to, you know, obviously, respect the will of the voters on something like that. But I think, as I say, anything that restricts the amount of experience that we can bring to bear to do the work that we need to do is not necessarily a great idea.
It's not cheap for somebody to be put on the ballot by the taxpayers. And I don't know of taxpayers, when the conservative majority was running, saying, hey, I really want this. This is the one thing I want you to do when you get in office, is make term limits on a city. Or, another issue that they brought up earlier last year, which was raising the campaign contribution limits. So, those are two things that I didn't hear any voters out there talking about in the 2016 election. And it doesn't come up anywhere in discussions that I'm in about things we need to do to fix our city. So, it is strange. And I tell you, I'm a little bit against it, Mike, because when we have a town like this, you know, we end up having some real wonderful people come here. And either whether they plant their flag or they create great business, but there's some incredibly smart people here. And why would we want to deny getting some, you know, incredible person here that has experience? Why is somebody moved out here from Washington, I want to retire, and I know city government better than it? Why would we want to, you know, limit ourselves from having great leadership in this community?
Well, I think it was Randall Stone that said at that meeting that, you know, politics is the only industry in which experience is discounted as being important, which is a really good point, if you think about it.
It's also kind of a non-issue when you think about it. And when you look at the history, as far as I know, in the history of Chico, there's only been, I believe, three council members who have had more, who have served more than three terms. And so, when you look at that history, is it really an issue that, and back to Aaron's point, is it really something that people are clamoring for? Is it really an issue that needs to be solved? Or is it something that's being politically motivated? So, again, and I think you're right, Aaron. I mean, bringing issues like this to a special election or to the ballot, that's a costly measure. Is it really, again, is this something that we really need to be focusing on? We should be focusing on homelessness? We should be focusing on, you know, the budgetary issues? There are all kinds of things that are facing the city. And to be distracted by something like this, I don't think serves us well.
I mean, I'd say if they can go out and get 9,000 signatures saying they want this on the ballot, then that would be fine. And I would be fine with that. There's things that, you know, the will that people can put on the ballot, and I like that about our state. However, you know, putting these things up there, when, you know, there's a few council members right now, Carl Orey's been, you know, had some terms back in the 80s where he was mayor, now he's back on there. So, they would limit Adam Schwab, they would probably limit Randall Stone and future, you know, people to come on. So, when I did some research, I couldn't find another town, another city that has this in California. So, you know, if there is one out there, if you guys got stuck, know any, you know, I don't know of any.
Well, you mentioned budget. I want to ask you this question because it's, I think it's important. You talked about the budget shortfalls on your website. And you wrote on your site that, in your opinion, budget shortfalls can be addressed by, quote, "asking all city staff to contribute their fair share." So, I guess my question is, what do you mean specifically by that? What is the fair share that you're asking these people to contribute?
Yeah, I mean, I think it gets real complicated real quickly, as everybody knows. But I think by that, what I mean is, and this is, this actually gets back to a change in tone of the way the current council operates. So, when I talk to people about this issue and other issues, the thing that I keep on coming back to is, we need to instill, and we need, it's going to take leadership to do it, a sense of collaboration and coordination, cooperation when we have these discussions. And again, that goes to any number of issues that the city faces. I think when it comes to budget specifically, there, you know, we've, many people have been talking for a while now about the pension liability and the issues related to that. Whether that's something that we can solve locally or whether that's going to take, you know, Chico is not alone in having that issue. It's a statewide issue, and it may take a statewide solution. But, you know, there are things that I think that we can do when we're negotiating contracts with city employees in terms of the structure of those pensions that ought to be on the table and ought to be discussed. And the city employees who I talk to are willing to do that. I mean, they recognize the situation that city's in. And so I think that's a conversation where we come to the table and we say, let's just, let's just have a true dialogue about this. Let's not dig into our ideological positions, but let's have a conversation. So, it's things like that. I mean, I think, I think there's lots of room for actual negotiation. So, when I say come to the table, I mean, come to the table in a spirit of, you know, coordination and collaboration around kind of thinking creatively about how we can approach all of these issues, really.
But again, going in, not necessarily retroactively. You're not really seeking to peel things, peel benefits back from people.
Right. I think it's a, you know, it's a sacred trust that we have with the people that we, you know, that we've, you know, that have negotiated in good faith. And so I think we need to respect that, absolutely. What I'm talking about is, as we work on future contracts, and we're working on, you know, how we structure things like benefits and salaries, et cetera, going forward, we need to have a candid conversation about what the city can really do and what it can't. I've heard the idea floated that we ought to consider a salary cap at a certain level of a sitting employee. I don't know how feasible that is, but it's something that I think all of these concepts should be on, you know, on the table as we look to address some of the issues that, you know, that we're facing.
How do you feel about the green line? I see that's a topic on your website as well, on your Facebook page that you talk about. I mean, do you think that the green line should be protected kind of at any cost, or should we need to balance that with the tax base and the business interests as well?
Right, exactly. I think there's, it's always a balance. Harken back to the 10 years that I spent on the Park Commission and issues around the green line. While they don't frequently come up when it's, you know, when you're dealing with parks and playgrounds and things like that, there's still some fundamental issues around green space and the way that development is done in Chico. So, my answer to your question is that I think that it's not an either-or. I think that we can defend the green line. I think the green line is absolutely critical when it comes to protecting both, you know, ag land as well as green space, repairing space. So, I think that we can do that and encourage and incent infill types of development. Again, I've spoken with developers who are actually eager to do that, that if provided sort of the leadership and the incentives to be able to focus their development within the green line, that there are places where that can happen. I would advocate for that to include affordable housing when we're talking about housing development. That's another key piece of this conversation, going back to homelessness. But at any rate, I think that it's not an either-or with the green line. I feel passionately that we need to protect it to the extent that we possibly can. We need to also support and grow our tax base. And I think, I don't think that it's unrealistic. I think we can do both.
Let's talk about tax base. And, well, real quick with the endorsement. I saw you were endorsed by a Nurses Association.
The California Nurses Association. I'm really proud of that. That was a process that I entered in pretty early on because both, again, going back to family history and just kind of where my values are, being engaged with local unions and supporting that kind of work, and then seeking that support from them is a part of who I am. So, yeah, I was proud to be able to talk to lots of people through that process. It's a learning process as you come to understand what, in that case, the Nurses Association, you know, what's most important to them. So, it has, obviously, things to do with universal health care and, you know, access to women's reproductive services. So, all of those kinds of issues came up as we went through that process. And, yeah, so I was one of the first in Northern California to earn that endorsement.
Yeah, and you were the first. I was looking at candidates that, I was researching, Mike, for the state party, and they had all these Assembly candidates, they had all these, they had, you know, Senate candidates, all these Congress candidates, and they had one City Council member for the whole state, and it was Rich Ober at Chico. So, it was great to, great to see that. Really, really struck out. I said, wow.
Glad to put us on the map there, right?
So, it's a good thing. It was cool. But as far as getting in the council, what are some of the first things you want to tackle, especially if, let's say, there was a windfall of revenue of, let's say, let's say a hot new industry came into town, and there just might possibly be some revenue coming your way. What would be some of the things you would tackle with that?
Right. Well, I mean, I think there are a couple of things, and they're related. So, one of the things that I would do is, I'd like to see us put resources back toward our, and this goes back to my passion for parks and greenways. I think I'd like to see us reinvest in Bidwell Park and in all of our parks and greenways, and specifically into that park staff. That staff was really decimated during the recession. That was the first place that the city went to cut, which I argued strongly that that was the wrong move to make. So, some windfall comes, and we actually have the resource to be able to do that. I'd love to reinvest in Bidwell Park, specifically in parks and greenways. Related to that immediately becomes, because one of the big impacts in Bidwell Park and greenways is our homelessness issue. And so, that's another place that I'm passionate about through my work with the Torres Shelter. I would love to see resources put toward outreach, toward mental health services. That's typically something that's addressed at the county level, and that's fine. If those resources could go to, that we're talking about a windfall, then boosting the COC and some of the efforts that happen at a county level, but if it could be a city program as well. Related to that is public safety. So, I would love to see the target team even more fully staffed and supported so that they could be doing some of that outreach too. And they've been able to do it in the past. I think we can do it again. So, a windfall of money would be, would be a nice thing, a nice problem to have to solve, right? How to disperse that.
Absolutely. Well, we're coming up to the end of the segment, but before we go, why don't you maybe take a little time and plug where people can find out more about you and your campaign?
Appreciate that, yeah. Have a great website, www.oberforchico.com.
O-B-E-R.
O-B-E-R-Chico, for Chico. You can volunteer through that website. You can make, learn all kinds of information about my stances on various issues, including what we're talking about here. Also, would love to have people like me on Facebook. Our social media group is doing fantastic work there, and we're sharing lots of information through Facebook. And so, if people want to go to facebook/oberforchico again, and check out, we've got a lot of dialogue happening there, and would love to have people participate there, too.
Great. And always at the Mobilize meetings, too. You're kind of a reachable guy.
Yeah, absolutely. And trying to be engaged in every level. We formed Mobilize right after- formed Mobilize right after the election. I was part of a group that, that founded Mobilize. We've done lots of work and, and we're still extremely active. We meet the second and fourth Sunday of the month at the Chico Peace and Justice Center. We're there every week. I'm there every week doing, doing work. And, and so, yeah, reach, you can reach out to me through Mobilize as well.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Rich. Thanks for joining us.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Really, really great time getting to know you.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
And that is our show. Thanks again to Rich Ober for joining us. Don't forget, NorCal News Now is available wherever you download your podcasts. So check us out there and please subscribe. We can also be found on Facebook at NorCal News Now, where you can post your comments and suggestions for upcoming podcast topics and guests. So thanks all of you for listening in. We'll be back at you soon with another big episode of NorCal News Now. Ciao.